All right, it is five o'clock. So let's bring this Kintas County Public Hospital District Number One Board Meeting for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five to order. And Matt, did you have a change on the agenda you wanted to suggest?
Yes, would you please add a volunteer around the AHA Leadership Summit attendance under Education Board Reports, please?
Okay.
Yep.
And under new business, I wanted to add an opportunity for us to discuss the arrangement of the agenda, which is longstanding, and just take an opportunity to see if there's any changes we want to make, make the meeting more efficient. So if there's no objections, I'd like to add that's the new business, we could be item C under new business.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? And I will comment, Bob, Commissioner Davis texted me and said he's running a little bit late, so he'll be here as soon as he can. So currently, there are four of us here in attendance. If you have a chance to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when ready.
Pardon?
Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second. By Matt. Any further discussion? On David, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I too will vote aye. No one is opposed, so that motion passes. We are to section four, public comment and announcements. Do we have anyone that would like to make a public comment? Yes, please step forward and introduce yourself, and you have five minutes, up to five minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we'll be very quiet. I think we can.
Okay. My name is Joan Bennett. As you probably know, I've been having an acute health issue. Not an anti-vaxxer, but I attribute what I've been going through to the COVID vaccine. I would be glad to discuss that with you and what I've been doing to survive, because every day is a struggle for survival for me. And however, I wanted to to thank the Board of Commissioners for your persistence or your dedication to this healthcare facility, which is so critical for our community and our whole county. And I also wanted to applaud your appointment of Jason Adler. I think it's a very good selection. And I look forward to Jason's oversight and management of this facility. Jason got a gold star from me a long time ago when he helped Scott Olander install or provide a Roth IRA option for our retirement benefits, which I was really grateful for that for myself now, as I'm trying to maximize that potential. But anyway, I'd like the opportunity to discuss, Jason, some of the members in your chain of command that are, that I see as problematic to the culture of KBH. We had some problems in the last administration, and you are my fourth CEO. I came in in two thousand and six here with Eric Jensen and worked for fifteen years on the night shift in the laboratory. I'm a lab tech. And I'm also a research tech. I have twenty years of research experience. But I I see at least at least two people who are problematic. Brought some really serious issues here. And and I I have been encouraged by the the management of the board in addressing this problem gently, slowly, calmly. And I never thought it would happen. And I did my level best, committed, gave up my job to try and bring this to your attention, to the best of my ability. I'm dyslexic, and every letter that I write to you takes hours and hours to compile. And I think you may have seen that in my construction. But I've tried to provide convincing evidence of what I was desperately trying to tell you because the laboratory was being corrupted. And that, the laboratory, as you know, if you don't have the laboratory, you're just guessing about what's happening with your patients. And it's it's a threat to patient safety everywhere if you can't trust what's coming out of the laboratory. And it's absolutely critical that you have that complete confidence in what's going on there. So when when there's any question at all in the leadership in the laboratory, you should be highly concerned. And I would, I would like to describe what happened to you because it was a very underhanded thing that happened. And and it exploited our trust and our naivety and our professional standards. We're severely undermined. And that is a threat to everybody in this facility because I don't need to explain why. It should be obvious. So I would like the opportunity to speak with you, if that's okay. I hope that's not a threat to you. I think knowledge is power, and you should be well aware of what you have on your chain of command. This chamber, this is an echo chamber. If you're only relying on a few people to tell you what eight hundred people are doing, then you're getting a very limited perception. So I'm glad to speak with you. If you you actually have the evidence that I would bring to you at your fingertips, you have the power to ask for it. And for the commission, commissioners knows what I'm talking about. And they haven't discussed this with you themselves, but at this point, they've done all that they can.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up in the next thirty seconds.
The rest is up to you, sir, Jason, our leader.
And so if you want to make an appointment with the CEO, you should reach out to the Executive Secretary and ask for an appointment and so forth. But public comment isn't a place to set appointments, but thank you very much for your thoughts.
I just like that opportunity.
Definitely, yeah. And as a standard policy, we don't react to stuff we're told in this actual meeting. We take it back and we'll deliberate ourselves and see if there's something we should do to reach out. But I really appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment for today? So I I will jump in because I was asked to make sure just everybody knows about Magical Evening, which is the event that the foundation puts on each year, and it's happening April twenty sixth at the CWU Ballroom. And it's a place where I hear they've got a lot of great stuff. They're coming in for the auction, both Hank Silent and and Public Auction and so forth. So if you're looking for something to do on April twenty sixth, it's a great event. This year, I think they contributed more than half a million dollars to really important things that we need here in the hospital. So it's a wonderful organization to support. So that's my public speech. Now back to
One more announcement. I just wanted to welcome Jennifer Reed. She's our new Chief Financial Officer. She started on Monday. I'm very excited to have her, welcome her to the team. So we've been doing some handing off of things. She came from, was previously the CEO, CFO of Berry County Hospital, and before that, they've been filler at Lipton. Some good experience and and Washington-based experience. And then also, I just want to introduce Dr. Mark Beard. So he's sitting in for Dr. Hoppy as the Acting Chief of Staff. So he's the Vice Chief of Staff and present here, and thank you for attending and jumping into that role rather quickly. I don't expect any, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments? All right, we are on then to reports and dashboards. Mandy, who's not here today, are you going to step in for?
It'll be me.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And and Tony, who's here filling in for Mandy, and she's going to come down to speak to the clinic falls.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm Toni Clayton, Patient Experience Coordinator, and stepping in for Mandy to talk about a little bit about the fall risk assessment that we've been doing in the clinics for the last couple of years. So in two thousand and twenty-two, we started measuring fall risk screening completions at primary care clinics at Family Medicine Cleveland, Family Medicine Ellensburg, and internal and adult medicine as part of a prioritized while quality improvement. We wanted to make sure that patients sixty-five and older have at least, at least an annual falls assessment performed on them. And just to bring that into the forefront of of our clinical staff. Also, any patient who is symptomatic, so dizziness, gate changes, weakness, anything like that, we would want them to also have documentation of a falls risk screening. This is important because we know falls are a leading cause of death in our elderly patients. Nearly ten percent, I think it's nine point three percent last year of patients who fall with a fracture will die within the first month. Thirty-three percent will die within the twelve months of their fall. So for patient safety, this is a big assessment to capture. Fall risk assessments provide proactive care, help us identify and provide our patient with needed resources like PT and OT for strength and gate training, any DME that they may need, and home safety assessments. The measurement itself, fall risk assessment is fairly common over there. That can be reported to CMS as a NIPS measure. It's a merit-based incentive payment system measure. Cerner or Oracle does have a way of measuring falls risk, but when we used it, it required a lot of manipu- manipulation manually to pull the reports to get usable data for the care teams to use. Dr. Hibbs had originally developed the manual calculation process, and it was extensive. And once he departed, a few of the processing steps were lost, and encounters of providers that were new to KBH were excluded. So eventually, we transitioned to adaptics. Now the reports are automated, and when a new provider starts at KBH, they're automatically counted into the reports. Amy Diaz, our data analysis guru, did go back and refresh the dashboard so that the data collection method is the same throughout the whole dashboard period. She's not entirely happy with this measure, and it it is not perfect. We're only counting patients. We're only able to count patients are what adaptics calls due today. So someone who has ten assessments in a year may never actually show up as due for a report because each time they're assessed, that due date moves to the next year. I know that's really confusing. So if I had an assessment in January of two thousand and twenty-four, my due date for the next one is January two thousand and twenty-five. But if I come in in March and I'm dizzy or I've had a change, which that demographic of patients do over sixty-five, they can change monthly, weekly. I have a new assessment in March. Now my due date is March of the next year, and so it just keeps scooting it out. So some of those people are going to get lost. But we do know that it is, our care teams have have an increased awareness of these measures and are performing the assessments, and our patients are safer as a result. With the dashboard. You can see the current status of the measure on the QI dashboard. Thirteen, thank you.
Quick question. I mean, the software company knows that it's doing that. It seems like a pretty easy fix.
It does. And that's why we have Amy, who who I I talked with her, and I I told her, hope this makes sense to someone who's not an Amy Diaz, who has that. And she said it doesn't make sense, and they know that it doesn't make sense. So it's just the capability of that system. And the sad part is that's better than the Oracle systems. So, I know. So on page thirteen, you can see the fall risk dashboard for the QI dashboard. And with adaptics, the good thing about that is clinic leaders can drill down into the data for individual clinicians and teams. This dashboard does show a decline over the last several months, and we we think that's because of transitioning providers. We've had a lot of change in the last several months. And then also the the fact that adaptics only captures that, do that day data. But back in two thousand and twenty-three, when the reports were calculated manually, all the clinics were up above consistently up above eighty percent. And we did see, even though we have some challenges, that we have seen a lot of improvement for our patient safety over the last few years. So when we first started in two thousand and twenty-two, the clinics were average, those three clinics averaged thirty-two percent completion. So now they're up in the sixty to seventy-five percent completion. So that is a lot better. We had a lot of activity that came around the improvement for patient safety and falls assessments. And I used to go to each clinic, showing them their month-to-month data and how it compared with other clinics, which spurred a real great competition, especially between Family Medicine and Family Medicine Cleveland. They did not want the other clinic outdoing them. So each month I'd come back, and it would be, yeah, a little bit better, a little bit better. Clinic staff designed, kind of copied the hospital and designed a visual cue reminder system so that would have a falling leaf on the exam room door so that if the MA knew that that needed to be done for that patient, it was just a cue to both the provider and the MA so that that would be done. FMCE, I'm not sure if they still do it, but they had a metric of the week. Yeah.
Still on there.
Yeah, where they would talk about this and many other metrics and just kind of keep that metric in focus for the week. So it, you know, if it's if it's repeated, then it's, you know, something that you're going to get in the habit of doing. And then KBH increased the importance of this measure with bonus incentives to the provider. We did see large improvements where the provider took, when the provider took the lead in prioritizing the assessments to the team. So if it's important to your physician, then you're you're more likely to to do that, that work. So I don't know what this looks like moving forward. This is something that we'll be working with Dr. Thomas and his leaders on to decide what ongoing priority measures they want to see in the future. So, and I know you did a dyad. That's it? Any questions besides the using data?
And are you doing her overall report also, or just the fall?
I take that to know. I apologize, I didn't.
That would be fun.
It would be. So, all right. So you you read Mandy's report, so you'll have to save questions for Mandy. Anything else for Tony on today's topic?
Thank you for sharing.
For being here and sharing with you.
Thank you, wonderful Tony.
All right, moving on, then we are to the Chief Executive Officer Reports. Jason Adler. Jason, what do you have for?
Yeah, thank you. Well, it's been, it's been a busy month, but lots of good things happened, and really excited to fill out the senior leader team with Jennifer coming this week. That was just noted on the the front page there. So we had five, five new positions plus mine on the senior leadership team, and I've just been really blessed to have such a great team come together. Home Care Hospice has has had a lot of turnover, run this up there a lot, working with the staff, and and we've been really successful in recruiting the other as well. So next month, we'll be welcoming two new RNs full-time plus a new clinical director. So really excited to be working with the team and integrate our new staff up there and and hopefully get a really exceptional program for Home Care Hospice and support the staff up there. They've they've worked hard to make ends meet as some nurses have have left that positions. So cardiology is going wonderful with Dr. Nyak coming in. So I was just over talking with Dr. Nyak a little bit ago. He's really appreciating and very welcome to KBH. So if you haven't had a chance to meet him, and you'll meet him at some point, I think he'll be at the
Hopefully for your reasons.
Yeah. He'll be at the provider dinner, not to be a patient, obviously. And if you happen to be a patient, he is amazing to work with, so fun. So it's exciting to see that program growing. We anticipate welcoming Dr. Hoppy back too when she comes back and and continuing to recruit, to keep growing that program. Advocacy, me and Matt and John all went over to the FIA for some advocacy days with WISHA. So that was really educational for me, and it was nice to have the opportunity to speak with some of our representatives. And I just encourage everybody to jump on and see some WISHA's priorities and send a note to our representatives. So I've taken opportunity to do that a couple of times on a couple of house bills, and hopefully we'll see some of them go through and some of them not go through. But there's a lot on the budget at the state incredible level this year, obviously.
Did WISHA give me a really good list of papers to talk to the advocacy about? Yeah, because I I get to go to the Governance Committee for WISHA, and that was the day before the advocacy. And there was a lot of other commissioners there, and we sat around and we talked about everything that needed to be added to the advocacy. So that way, anybody that was going to go to that meeting could consequently go. And I was going to go to the meeting, but since we should only have two commissioners go to it, because otherwise it'd be a public meeting. That was wonderful that John and Matt went to the meeting, and you got the list of stuff that the Governance Board gave you. Because we were there for about two hours in the Governance Board going over everything. Wish it would bring up a few things, and all the commissioners from the other hospitals that were at that board, getting on the actual committee meeting, would talk about it. So thank you, you three people for going and doing great advocacy for us.
If you're interested, yeah, sorry, if you're interested in WISHA's sort of legislative priorities, they did share some stuff with Jason and John and I.
Yep.
And me. So if you if you want to see it, we'd be happy for it.
Absolutely. House Bill one, one, two, three is probably the most significant to follow. So that's the one that would require hospitals to contract with any Pev and seven insurance carrier and also require a rate cap on those. So this is the state's way of trying to manage premium costs, I guess, with inflating healthcare costs. So just to pay it as much. I think it's significant cut to
I think tomorrow's a good day for these bills. They need to be on the committee by tomorrow to move forward in the session. So when the crowd can see where they stand, but
raise wages, but not not save them.
Yeah. Interesting concept. I've been connecting, I connected with the Ellensburg Rotary, went to CWU and Oklahoma Department, so just trying to build some community and meet other people in the in the community. Recruiting retention, Janine's got an awesome report, but she's been doing very good with her recruiting team to bring in some really skilled candidates and get some really tough positions to fill.
Yeah, they've done a wonderful job.
Awesome seeing seeing her report on those. IV shortage, so we are quite stable for our saline. We are continuing to just be good stewards of the resources. So we are just utilizing in a capacity that is less we're using less than we used to, but we're living absolutely all standards of care, not changing anything that we do. Dr. Longo has been using the new device that was approved by the board back in January twenty-seventh was the first time he used it on a couple of new total joint cases, and they went well. He loved the new equipment and just wanted to extend a thank you for the approval to that.
We should have had a gamble that day.
Yeah. And construction, lots of things going on in construction. So every pocket of the organization, we've got some construction upgrades or maintenance stuff going. So it's always fun to chase all the subcontractors around. That's what Wayne's doing all day, exercise, so.
That's all I have on my standard report. If you have any questions on that, otherwise, I want to talk a little bit about Radio Hill. Any questions for Jason on the first part of the report?
So Radio Hill is an administrative space. We'll never have patient care of patient care type setting up there, but it is fifty percent build out, which is about ten thousand five hundred square feet. So we have another ten thousand five hundred square feet of empty space that we've made not empty. So it's a lot of fillers right now. Things just found their way to fill up the hallways and rooms up there. It's a wonderful space, I think, to begin doing some design work and plan work to continue to expand and get as much administrative staff and non-patient facing that can be in that setting to open up settings where there'll be patient facing. So I wanted to propose to the board a request to enter into some pre-design work with our architect of record and begin.
So currently, we have staff located in buildings that could be seeing patients. And
Yes.
And build out this space, consolidate people over there, we have more running space.
Exactly. A an example of that is like our referrals coordinators. So they work with patients, every insurance companies to coordinate referrals with the clinics. They don't have to actually look the patients in the eyes, though. It's a lot of phone work and working on the computer. So that staff, for example, right now, some of them are in the Mac Annex next door. Those staff could be up at Radio Hill or people that answer the phone, schedule appointments and as well, accounting, coding, new cycle is all up there, Home Care Hospice. So all of those type roles can be in that setting.
Do we have a cap on what we'd be allocating for this sort of design, pre-design work?
So the pre-design was just under twenty-two thousand.
And that would answer some questions of this is feasible and at what general price point we'd be looking at to move forward?
Yep, that would work up getting a a real super rough estimate and some phasing options that we could go about getting out the other half.
Any questions for Jason on this topic? Do you need a motion from us?
I would do.
Okay. So if we have a motion to allow Jason to move ahead with this pre-design work, motion by Terry.
Second.
Second by Erica. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I too am an aye on that.
So that motion passes. Good. Anything else for us?
That is all that I have.
Excellent. Well, moving on then, we're going to go to Janine, Human Resources.
I have our key updates. Jason talked about the the hot jobs, and we are dealing with chronic absenteeism across the board. It really is not unique to us, but it is a pain point. And so we have been addressing that sort of systematically with our staffing, nurse staffing group that meets monthly. There's a lot of appetite even from that group because they're the ones that are actually suffering from it as well because they're having to pick up the shifts. So I think there is a lot of appetite to make some changes to that. We'll be rolling out policy through negotiations with the WSNA. So we're looking forward to that. The the only other thing I really wanted to call out was our participation in the Rural Collab Contract Management Service. This is Before Health is the platform that they're using. And what it is, is just a group hospital banded together to create their own agency contract management tool to give us group pricing. And it allows us to leverage other hospitals as a group to reduce contract pricing. So this is very exciting. We've launched So this is very exciting. Um, we launched that in January and, um, we're already starting to see savings. This is just an example of the spend report that we can now start, um, monitoring, um, as a part of this work. Um, and in fact, we recruited, um, uh, an agency, uh, agency nurse, um, just this last, just about a week ago. Um, historically, we would have had to pay about fifteen thousand dollar finder's fee and that's waived because it's from the group. So it's already, um, proving its worth right out the gate. Um, I think we've got a few bugs to still work out with, um, the, the time clock, but the tracking will be way better because we'll have centralized tracking through our time. Time system. Um, and again, we'll be able to monitor the spend, um, a lot easier with that. So. And that is really the, the biggest call out, I think, from, from the report unless you've had any other questions.
Questions? Yeah, that agency that we started using, it was, uh, born from the, the rural collaborative. So they started a company and basically we contracted. We're the second organization to, um, sign on with them and, and go live. So we've learned a lot. They've learned a lot. And they're rolling it out to all the other collaborative hospitals as well. So it's been a really good tool that the collaborators has came up with. Um, it helps obviously filling the seats and it also helps on the accounting side too. So we don't have, I think we probably have fifteen different contracts with different labor agencies. Now we have one. And then they bill us timely as well. So we know how many hours they clock in, clock out. Versus it can be six month length sometimes, the other setup.
Janine, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
No, good. Um, historically too, the, so each director would be at the mercy, they, they would call out and they would have to take time to call all these different. Companies to, to set up a call with their rep and, and see if you have someone. So it took a lot of time for the director, a lot of admin time for the director just to even find someone. And then when you're desperate for coverage, uh, you're not in a very good space to negotiate the rate, right? Cause you're kind of at the mercy of, of the agency and they know this and they play that to the advantage. Now that we have a, a broader footprint, they just have to put in the request into the computer. It shoots out to all the agencies. Now the agencies are competing for your, uh, opening. And the nice thing about that is that it just takes a lot less time from the director to have to negotiate that. The collab is negotiating the rates. We can see what the rates are. Um, so we've just got a lot more hour to kind of keep those in check. It's the better way of doing it.
I just, uh, it seems like our turnover, uh, is, has gotten, the turnover rate is much better than, than it has been. This seems to be a trend or at least a snable. Um, so it doesn't seem to be just sort of a flip.
No, no, I do think we are stabilizing for sure.
To what do you attribute that except your brilliant leadership? Is it something?
I don't think it's me. No, it's, it's the group as a whole really, because I'm not in all these departments. Your, your number one, um, I do think it is the, the strong support of, of leadership for their managers. The number one influencer on your turnover is gonna be your frontline manager. Um, that they are gonna have the biggest impact on the, the staff at large. And so I think just making sure that they've got good support systems. Um, I, I, I really think that is probably your biggest influencer on staff turnover.
But, uh, to what do you attribute the change? Like, is there better support for those people now? Or, or, uh, I guess I'm just curious what, to what we attribute this improvement?
I, I don't know. I do think you've had a lot of, um, sort of leadership movement. Um, and I do think there's been a concerted effort. For folks to get out and round and just make sure that we're in the trenches with them. I know Julie set the stage really well, um, to just make sure that there wasn't a large, um. Shift, um, what, through that transition. I thought that was really, really well done to make sure people felt secure and supported through that. And I do think also the floppy work that was being done, there was a lot of work to set the stage, um, for that to happen. Um, when you were doing the employer of choice work in twenty twenty-four, there were a lot of little things that spoke to, um, that, you know. Helping staff to sort of build and form community. That's a big deal. A feeling of belonging. Um, there was some really good work with, uh, the benefits. Wellness brings. There was some, um, really strong work being done with, um, just sort of support for management. So I, I think probably a lot of that, just the, the focus on being the employer of choice and kind of putting that at the forefront was a big deal.
Sure. Thank you.
There's, uh, some general economics as well. So it's not just us seeing there was high turnover coming off the backs of COVID. That was seen everywhere where it was higher turnover as well and we experienced as well, but momentum follows it as well. So when you start having that turnover, you get momentum. It's like, well, they quit and quit too. They all quit. Um, so there is a definite momentum piece in there as well. So I think we've definitely caught that momentum, improved it. And she's been hiring just great people. Another piece of, it's not fun to work in an apartment that's understaffed as well. So the quicker we can get that department staffed, the more job satisfaction everybody else has as well.
Excellent. Any additional questions? I'm just gonna ask real quick if you can expand all of this FMLA source thing that we're transitioning to and you can cite, you can give us on how that works and.
So, um, again, you've got, uh, uh, when you're dealing with, uh, FMLA, Washington paid family leave, ADA, all the different types of leaves you throw up. Um, it's complex and there's just a lot of different layering on, and it matters when you take it and when you don't take it, is paid, is it unpaid? All the things. Um, and so you have one person here historically that was done that. And that was actually, um, another area of high turnover historically in HR. It also takes a lot of time to walk the employee through it because it's confusing. Um, and then you gotta walk the manager through it. And then you have to have someone kind of coordinating those conversations and then also getting the documentation to support it. And it was just, you know, when you had nineteen, you know, fifteen to nineteen, uh, leaves that in any time, that was maybe doable for one person. Um, you had, we, I think at last count, we had over fifty, um, various leaves between your, uh, continuous leaves and your intermittent. And so what FMLA source will do is it will help do all of the groundwork. It will also help us be a little bit more consistent with our approval process. Um, and then allow Ani to act as, um, sort of the mediator between. So she can kind of keep a thirty thousand foot view on what FMLA source is doing. And then she can actually be the boots on the ground help for the employee and the manager as well. So it'll just help us take one person and spread it a lot farther and it'll also help us with accuracy.
So do you feel it's safe to say it helps both the employee and the company?
Oh, heck yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything else from you? Janine, you're good. All right. Thank you. Moving on. Uh, Wayne, we've got, uh, expanding product data. Anything else you wanna share with us?
No, um, pretty much I see it. Uh, we've made some definite milestones as far as some of the areas that we're, uh, taking over. Um, we're down to very few of the areas that, uh, are continuing with construction. And it, it's, this is really going well. So we're still on, uh, target for March twenty-seventh.
Okay. And I saw you in the hallway a week or two ago and you mentioned that just through good timing, uh, recent water leak wasn't as bad as it could be because. It was, they happened like on a Friday and so he was still there rather than on the weekend. So that was a big relief. Yeah.
So, yes, it, uh, uh, thank you to, uh, Amy, uh, across that and Dave Swory. Who were, uh, kind of making their rounds and checking on the construction in some of their areas. Uh, yeah, if they hadn't seen it, they gave us a call. We shut it down in a hurry and turned it out good. Yeah. Water is a headache this time of year.
Yeah, I know that was still back in the under construction side too.
Yes.
Really nice. So much change in operations.
So you think, uh, by the end of March then Walker will finish their contractual obligations and be wrapping up?
That's what we're looking.
And Orthopedics is underway currently. So we've.
Yes, uh, actually, um, Orthopedics had actually kind of got started on January twenty-fourth. Uh, when we were able to move Rhonda's one pair over to the Valley Clinic and that gave them the opportunity to step in early. They've already got about half the building, uh, demolished and ready for renovations. Um. The, uh, engineering team, IT team and Jelica's, uh, general surgery team. All together today and they'll finish up tomorrow from moving from that old ortho into their newly remodeled, uh, general surgery building. So, and then they'll start seeing patients Monday.
Excellent. And that's, uh, is that VK Powell doing that constructive project?
Uh, it is like join somebody, uh, that's now Aldrich.
They got bought out or they're absorbed or combined with somebody. So it's the same people, but a different name now.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's beautiful, beautiful space. Um, though they're wrapping up the general surgery vascular thing today, as Wayne said, and the staff, the level of staff has been walking through it. Getting excited with it, putting all their things. So it's beautiful. I think we added two more exam rooms through it as well. So we'll have a little better patient flow and access there. And, and we do have two new, uh, vascular surgeons that are, we're sending practicing that clinic. It's been really nice to meet both of them as well.
Excellent. Um, anything else you wanna share with us or?
Uh, no.
Any questions for Wayne? Thanks Wayne, appreciate it. All right. Moving on to operations, death counts. We've got chief nursing officer. What do you have for us?
A little presentation.
Excellent.
I, I presented my ninety day assessment, although I've not been here fully ninety days. Um. My team was getting restless at wanting to know what it was finding and what it's wanting to do. So I did it a couple of weeks early. Um, so I sent this off to the exec team and we thought we'd bring here and see if you guys would like to hear it.
Excellent.
Um, so these are my guiding principles and understanding the audience of this slide deck originally was my direct, my dream. I do have to put through. And so in, when I'm doing an assessment, I'm always looking at our mission, vision, values, our strategic, strategic initiatives of where we're going. And I'm trying to, uh, um, connect everything that my team is doing to all of those things as well. So the guiding principles of the assessment are, you guys know what these are?
Yeah.
I just thought I would test you. And so that's how the assessment is, um, described. Next slide please. Um, so starting with the vision of the organization, I'm hoping that you guys all know the vision as well. Um, I'm learning it myself still as far as memorizing it, but, um, making sure that the team knows and understands the vision that we are all guided by every single day. I like to highlight some of the, the key components that speak to me. And then when I'm talking to my team, asking them, do, do they align with this? What parts of it do they align with? And if they don't align with that, then we need to have, you know, other conversations on how we can get behind it. Um, and so that was the purpose of this slide. Next slide. Um, I'm sorry, that was the mission. Here's the vision. All patients and providers and employers are proud to recommend KVH. Is a trusted source for personal health and community wellbeing. And in this conversation with my team, I, I just talked to them about. What piece do they have in this? And also what do their team, where do their teams fall in this? Cause this is the conversation I want to have with the teams every day to build that pride in what they do every day. Next slide. So then here's my vision that should come from the organizational vision. Um, patient care services provides excellent patient staff and provider experience by working in collaboration to provide optimal care to the region. We will talk further about collaboration, building trust is a foundational principle for our success. And I'll explain how I'm doing that. Engaging the teams and the vision by instilling KVH values and everything that we do. Breaking down silos. I think that's one of the primary parts of my assessment that I'm seeing. Generating more open communication and ingraining value to each and every team member. And then I did add in innovation and creativity to our daily work because I think we all know healthcare is complex. And that's the way we're going to move the organization where it needs to go. Can you play this video? I forgot to ask you to grab the link. Now. Um, okay. So I played the video and I don't know if you guys have seen this before. I really like the con- concept when you're building teams and you're, and you're trying to move people in the same direction. I like to use the rowing of a boat, of rowing together. So if we're not rowing in the same direction, the bottom one, if you hit, if you played it, you could probably pull the link. Yeah, that's the link. But the intention is, you know, if you're all rowing in the dirt, same direction, you can get where you need to go with less resistance and, um, more efficiency, et cetera. If you're rolling against each other, you, you not only do not tackle an direction, you may not move a little bit more.
Like the bottom, the cross at the bottom is Ken. It's right here. Or you can use edge.
Click on the edge.
Edge is right here.
Next one down. Keep going. Google.
I was just looking for a.
I am sorry. I totally forgot to ask her to get these ready.
Andy clicked on that slide deck and it worked for her, but she's magical. I think if you just close out of those, it'll let you get to it. Close them. There you go.
So I think that speaks for itself. So that's why I like to play the video. Um, and so that's where I then next talked about partnership and collaboration. And I think this is key. This is gonna be a key to all of our, all of our success, I believe, but specifically in my team and where we fit into the organization. It's only gonna work if we really improve our culture to where we're all, um, taking feedback, accepting feedback, really looking at things as they are to improve. And then following our strategy and values. And the key thing in my area specifically is I really wanna engage people in their own practice. And we can talk about accountability, um, in its own right, but really it's ownership. So I really don't like, love the word accountability. It comes down to that, but it's more about, we need to, we have a shared responsibility to the task at hand. And how can we work together to improve? So for instance, a nurse has a license and when, under their license, there's certain things that we would expect from a nursing practice. I shouldn't, it's kind of implied, but at times we drift away from those practices. And so as a leader, it's my responsibility to ensure that we set the right stage so that they can work in that environment. And then also it's the nurse's responsibility to practice at the top of their license. So it's kind of sharing that versus just saying top down accountability. Um, and so we're supporting each other and then interdepartmental alignment work within my own teams I'm seeing. This is why I played the video. What was really interesting is when I asked the team, where do you guys think you're at? Do you think this is you in the, in the boats? And they all said, no, we, we don't feel like we're pushing against each other. We feel like we're in independent kayaks. We're all going in the same direction, but we're doing it on our own. And they were able to self-identify that, which I'm seeing. So it was kind of cool that they saw that. But they didn't feel like they were fighting against each other, which is fantastic. Uh, but we need to get them all in the same boat. Um, and so some of the ways that I would, uh, like to, like to implement, to, to move on this initiative is creating a capacity huddle. So I've already put together hospital supervisors and directors meeting. Um, last night we had our first meeting, hospital supervisors meeting, the director, like everyone meeting independently. And then we're all meeting together. We had our first meeting with the house supers and the directors last night. And we spent an entire hour just talking about floating because they have never been in the room together to have that conversation. So it was fantastic. People were professional. It was, it's a little heated a couple of times, but that, we need to have those conversations to get to the next place. Um, so capacity hurdles is something that we will implement that we do twice a day. So everybody can talk about patient flow, staffing, all those things. So we're staying in constant communication. Cause if you don't talk about it, we'll make it up. When they make up, it's usually not the goal. Um, regular meetings like I just described, I want to work on it. Now this is gonna take, I have a full three year plan, but this is gonna take a while. Incorporate shared governance. We're really getting the input of the staff with the bedside, the people doing the work at the table so that we can. Make changes and improvements, but we need their input. And I know we've had this before. I think COVID, what I'm seeing is that. Nothing, I, I'm not seeing anything that I not, didn't see at other hospitals post-COVID. There's a lot of, um, trying to get back to what did we used to do? What is our current state and where do we wanna be? And I think everyone's excited to get back, um, to where things are. So we're trying to get, engaging the teams, getting them involved. And then clear communication strategies. So a couple of things I've put in place is weekly communications that are going out to staff by each team member or each leader to the team. So that they know what's the updates, what's going on, what's our staffing, how we hire people, how we not, have people left. And that, just that constant communication makes sure we're showing, we're partnering with them and collaborating. Um, customer experience, in my mind, this is not only the patient, but us, each other. Um. And so we, we aren't doing any intentional work around patient experience. I see in the data, uh, we're pretty stagnant. I see in the data, uh, we're pretty stagnant personally, that's just the way I look at it. But I'm not surprised because there's a lot of best practices that are not, we're not doing, such as bedside shift report, hourly rounding, lead rounding on patients. So there's a lot of things that we could be doing in that arena that would impact our patient experience that I don't see happening. So in my mind, our patient experience scores are, we're getting kind of lucky, because we're not, in my areas, doing any intentional work yet, but we are going to. Um, standards of care, so in order to create some ownership, we have to set the standards. And so right now, there's a lot of drift, there's like, where, what is our true north? So we want to create a true norm around standards of care, just in nursing and the, in the clinical areas, and then starting with our harms bundle, this harm prevention is number one, and then working across the board and through the specialties, and then in all of that comes documentation, document what we did, and the documentation should match, match our standards. Um, quality and safety, I, there's a, there's a very, Mandy's, Mandy's department is amazing and fantastic. But we need to also own the quality in, in the hospital, so I really want to get back to unit level ownership, where we're putting up our own quality boards, we're talking about process improvement, when the board comes to the unit rounds. If, if, if you guys are doing that, or maybe in the future we might do that, that then you can, they can talk about and be excited and proud of the work that they're doing at their unit level. Um, reinstilling our, our huddles, our safe boards and using Verge, we use Verge pretty good, I would say. But we need to get back to the boards that are at the unit level so that the directors can actually manage real time, it's kind of that, like low lying fruit. You know, if I have just a little pebble in my shoe, I can just put it on the board, we can manage it in real time. If it goes into the system, it sits in the system, they don't get to it right away, they may not know what happened, and it loses its momentum to show that we care, and we're trying to make sure their environment's good to work in. So, um, the only other thing I didn't mention was partnerships, so working with education, quality providers, Rhonda's areas, ancillary departments, all the other areas that we need, because nursing's a team sport in order to provide that best care to the patient. And then, um, some retention staff strategies on what to what, um, sorry, Janine was speaking to, is really developing our preceptorship program, so currently we, our preceptorship program is, um, well, I don't, we don't quite have one, um, to be honest. Transition to practice program, so we bring, we really want to bring in more new grads, and so we have one area that we've started a program. The next one we're bringing, uh, to, um, Jason as a, as a presentation, is in the ED, so we, we really, like, new grads are kind of our, our area of, um, I forgot what I was trying to say, but that's who's gonna be our next workforce, and we need to wrap our arms around them so they don't leave within the first year. And so in order to do that, we need a well-established program so that they stay here. And they may not stay here, we may be a stepping stone, we're a smaller hospital, but then we can launch them out as a, and be ready out in the nursing force so that they're, they're ready to go. And then professional development, I know that Janine had spoke to that a little bit earlier, their staff development. Um, next slide, please.
Deb, can I interrupt? Sorry, I forgot to mention at the top of the meeting, Commissioner Levenow has to leave early tonight, so I just wanted her to not awkwardly have to step out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I talked into coming for this part, but thank you.
I can finish the rest of it on YouTube later.
Definitely, yeah, thank you. So, so sorry, continue.
That's it. Um, so access, we need to work on our staffing to the point of not only hiring, but keeping people here. Operational flow, so there is some opportunities in my mind of, um, length of stay and how, how much we're moving our patients, our flow, there's, there's areas in which we have inefficiencies that I think we can improve, we have more patients in the bed with the same amount of staff. And then, um, learning to grow in place. So a lot of people are like, why don't we grow more beds? Our community's getting bigger, or the ER, so I'm really trying, and thank you, Jason, cause he helped me with that, is like, how do we continue to grow without increasing our beds? Um, and so in order to do that, the capacity huddle, working on travel reduction, and then one of the things that I put in place is hiring that people are getting in the system and quickly getting on the applicants, because they don't lose them. So I think it's five days, right? Time to hire. Okay, that's fine. And then financial stability, so I built some new, um, staffing plans that are really position control for the departments so that we now can project the amount of FTEs that we need, and do we have the right number of FTEs? And then that speaks to our travel reduction, so ensuring that we're ready for that. Um, decreasing the amount of transfers that we have, hopefully, in the end. And I think I spoke to everything else. And then I played this video, which I think it should play. It says.
You used a car for sale.
You, you, that, every time I watch it, I thought it's, it's still good. But it really, it says at the top, um, the only thing in life in your way is you. Um, so then the next slide is the last quote, that they left with the team, left the possibilities and inspire you more than the obstacles that discourage you. And that's my presentation.
Wonderful.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Very thorough, yeah. How's the job going from your perspective?
My job? Oh.
This is your ninety day thing, you're ninety days into it, so you showed us all the things you're thinking about, how do you personally, are you settled in, is it, uh?
Yeah, I'm very excited. I shared with Janine today that, um, Jeff from Med Surge Critical Care, he came to me today and he was all excited, you guys know him, right?
Yeah.
Just with his smile, and he said, I'm just, I don't know what to say, the team, they're just so excited, they're just waiting, like, when are we gonna get started on all the stuff you're talking about? That is like exactly what I needed to hear before I could move on anything, so they're like waiting. To, which is exciting, right? They're engaged, they want to be part of it, so I, that tells me that my assessment's accurate. I'm excited to be here, I feel like the team's getting excited, it's gonna be a lot of work. Um, but the director team's excited and the staff seem excited, so that fills my cup and gets me, yeah, kind of wrapped up to get going.
Good, excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you for the report.
Yes.
Alright, then we'll move on to, uh, Rhonda, Chief Ancillary Officer.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really fun working with really a lot of new people in this, you know, your team last four, five months, um, Deb for three months, Janine for six months, I think. Um, Wayne, I think seven, eight months now, so a lot of. It's been, it's been really fun, my goal's been to, I think I told Deb, my, her first week, my goal's been to hire people who are smarter and more creative than me, and have been really successful, and it's been really fun seeing the work coming out of them, out of the group, and I think the groups have fun with it too.
Well, change can be hard and scary, but also out of it comes a lot of new ideas and stuff too, so that's been exciting to see all the, the new thoughts coming to the process, so. It's great, yeah, thank you. Alright, Rhonda.
Hey, my report is on page thirty-one, and I think the most exciting thing for me, of course, imaging, winning the award, they were so proud of being recognized for the work that they did. And especially because in the past, they've had so many challenges of, you know, not answering the phone or being able to get what they needed from the department, so they were so proud of this award. And then, um, Jason and Janine have all stolen my thunder as far as coming.
Super wonderful report to share. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything about, um, the remaining.
Any questions? Uh, I was gonna say, uh, the, the home, uh, the home health, the hospice, so you, you've got some new people coming in.
Uh huh.
Finding some stability, I mean, I know it's been a real struggle and stuff, but we've seen some light now at the end of the tunnel a little bit.
We are, not until mid-March, you know, it just takes so long for people to get through the process of onboarding and then, you know, give notice to their employer and, and be able to start with us, so. And we've interviewed so many people.
Yeah.
Um, travelers and permanent staff, so it's just very challenging, but I think we've got some really wonderful staff coming aboard, and I'm really excited about it.
Good. Uh, anything else for us today? Alright, then moving on. Uh, Stacy's not here today, what are we doing? Oh, oh, go ahead.
Stacy's reporting.
Yeah, let's talk about.
Okay.
So we've been looking, and we'll take some of this to executive sessions, because of real estate stuff, but I just wanted to share what the group have opened, opened session, so we've been looking at some space and the board approved a, a resolution for capital investment back in May to invest three hundred and eleven thousand dollars into some space on Bay District Two. To, um, increase our upper county therapy services and move them out of the Cleo and, or C clinic and into some space that then would allow us to expand services further in Cleo and for primary care. There, uh, we're looking at pivoting to a new space that we found, um, opening up, so it's a new construction called Midtown Depot, so we're looking at engaging with them, we think it'd be a much more ideal space, a much more permanent, long-term potential space to be in, and can, and with the ability to grow. Um, and then also looking at the clientele that we serve up in Upper County that has some idiosyncrasies, and it has a, that kind of look and feel to it of the, of what you expect in Upper County. Um, so I think that will help not just attract, um, patients, customers, but also internal customers too, as Janine has talked about. Um, and with recruiting, we've got to recruit these physicians too, a, a physical therapist is is very hard to recruit right now, one of the hardest positions to recruit, so having a nice, beautiful space and facilities means a lot to that recruiting process. So, just, if you have any questions about that, otherwise we'll chat a little bit further in the session.
Yeah, I think, uh, I sat in a couple of meetings and, and based on the analysis of the current facility that we had under disposal, that we could put a bunch of money into. There's just more and more negatives, which were sort of, would be very scary from a financial investment, what it would really solve, so we found this other option, and I'm really glad we've got an opportunity to pursue it, because again, you know, your customer, I think they walk into a quality facility, it feels like this is a quality organization. And, and that other facility, like a hundred-year-old bus barn or something, that we were trying to make feel like it was quality, and it just, it was just exorbitantly expensive to bring up to the standards we want, so I think this is a good a good way to move forward as we are trying to protect the investment that we're putting into it.
Yeah, it, it sort of has four walls and kind of has the roof kind of a thing, so. Um, this is a very ideal opportunity, I think, for us, and thank Wayne, he kind of helped slow walk this project to where we are now at this juncture, and, and there's new space that a developer was creating, and, and we have the opportunity to jump on, so. It, it all works out for a reason sometimes. Thank you.
Alright, so, um, and then you have, uh, Stacy Lay's report, she is not here today, so, uh, I don't think she has any questions, we can try to get answered, or just, uh, read through the report. Be available, I assume, next month.
Yeah, so Stacy is obviously not present, able to make it today. Um, the clinics have been very busy, so you know, January financials were really drawn, a lot of us due to clinics being very busy. Uh, we've had a lot of good resistance, obviously, everybody's talked about recruiting, retention, we've got more providers than we've had this time last year. And, uh, really stable crew in there as well, so it's been really good. And despite that, we have two clinic managers that are on FMA's with new babies, so the clinic management is spread very thin right now, but they're managing, doing really well.
Excellent, thank you. So we'll move on to medical staff, we have acting chief of staff, Dr. Beard.
I didn't do this since I hadn't done it before, but.
It'll be fine.
Uh, we met, uh, I guess last week, and, uh, ended up reviewing um, a number of people for both, uh, initial appointments and then also for reappointments. Um, yeah, I'm not sure of the usual process, but I think it's usually that we uh, I guess each of these were approved for each of, uh, for both either the initial appointment or the reappointment, and I guess the committee uh, will present that to the board for approval.
Excellent, so, yeah, M E C has met and went through this, and, uh, so do we have a motion to approve this list of, uh?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second, or did Matt, did Bob stand? Nope, you did, second by Terry, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the, uh, medical executive committee applicants for this month? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I too will say aye. That motion passes.
And then the next two items are two areas, um, we don't have I guess both current, uh, critical, critical care, um, pulmonology, and then also infectious disease, um, consults, and emergency room as well as inpatient services kind of asked to organize the process, maybe you have someone that's available by telemedicine to consult with. Uh, those would be, um, credential through our organization, and this is the basic credentialing our basic credentialing and delineation of privileges for those folks that would be working with us in those, in those capacities. Um, you gotta look forward to that being a, a, additional clinical, um, toolkit that we can use, and, um, each of these are basically, um, basically we're kind of outlining the basic privileges and the basic, uh, uh, topics that they would be covering in each of the areas when they're gonna be consulting with the, uh, staff here, and would, um, kind of present both the delineation of privileges, uh, for the pulmonary, for the critical care pulmonary, and also the infectious disease telemedicine um, forms that we've approved at the Medical Executive Committee.
And so I, I list the fourth one, emergency medicine, is that included in this group also?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, it is.
Okay. And so.
I guess the others were more telemedicine, and that was, that was, uh, the emergency medicine, but yes, that can be included.
Do you feel you need individual motions or one group motion to approve all four of these?
I think one, one would be fine.
Okay, so again, these were all reviewed and, uh, prepared by the Medical Executive Committee. Uh, now this still says draft on top of the word draft, just go away once it's approved?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So you guys have had a chance to read through these documents, you've got the packet in advance. Um, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve all four of these. Motion passed?
Yep.
Motion by Matt? Second by Bob, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. I too will vote aye. There's no one opposed, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for us, Dr. Beard?
I believe that's all that I have.
Alright.
See, that wasn't so bad.
No.
So we'll hand it off to Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Thomas.
I'd like to, uh, begin my presentation with a request for approval from the board, uh, for myself and Dr. Larson, uh, to be appointed as leads of the antibiotic stewardship committee. And then also to request approval for, uh, myself to be appointed as the medical director and of clinic operations and also the chief medical officer.
Would you like these as separate motions or one?
Think separate motions might be appropriate.
We'll do, we'll do steps of them.
Okay, I, I move about the first one, a Dr. Thomas and Ken Larson.
We have a motion to approve, uh, as leads? Second? Right, we have motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, Dr. Thomas to Dr. Larson as leads of the antibiotic stewardship committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I too will vote aye. There's no one opposed, that motion passes. We have a request for a second motion to approve, uh, um, Dr. Thomas as medical director for clinic operations and chief medical officer, with motion.
Yeah, motion too.
Motion from Matt, second by Bob, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I too will vote aye. There are no opposed, that motion passes. Alright, thank you, and do you have a report for us at all?
I do, my report is on page forty-six, and, and, uh, most of the content of the report has been dealt with in, uh, reports from the other officers. One of the things that I would like to draw attention to though, is you will see accompanying your packet, a colorful diagram that illustrates the, uh, ownership culture that we're looking to achieve, or trying to elevate the concept of ownership, both through our physician leaders as well. So we've identified, uh, dyad leadership partnership for each of our physician leaders, at the top of this sheet, you'll see pairs involving the medical directors of each of our, uh, appropriate medical directorships. And at the bottom of the list and onto the second page, you will see the clinic leads at each of our clinics and the clinic managers, uh, to which they are partnered. We're hoping to, um, identify those dyad partnerships and do some, um, cultural, uh, investment in, in building that sense of ownership as a pair so that, uh, we can, uh, have that shared value and hopefully row our boat in the same direction.
Excellent.
And I'd also, uh, like to call out the additional work that, uh, Shannon Carlson has done in, uh, helping for Dr. Beard, uh, get up to speed in his new responsibilities in such a quick fashion.
Good, anything else for us? Good. Anything else for us?
That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Dr. Thomas, can I ask a question? Okay. I think you had listed at the bottom of the dyad, the C M I O.
Yeah.
And is that something that we're needing to have them recognize you as the C M I O?
Uh, it's it's just a recognition of a role at the moment. So it's it's not a position and and that's something we we will talk about um as we expand. There probably will be a utility for that role. Um, there are a number of other leadership opportunities that I think that I'd love to identify physician leaders to fill. But uh everybody's wearing so many hats right now. I think asking them to take responsibility for those roles probably pretty mature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've had a couple of tough years with, you know, a lot of turnover with providers. I spent some time in the hallway before this meeting with some uh local community members who were expressing their concern. Do you see anything change? Are we stabilized? I know we heard some of the roles are starting to fill. The economy's changing. People are committing more to jobs. And for from your side that you handle, what what can you look into the future? How are we doing? What can we expect?
I'm very hopeful. Uh, I think that there are a couple of things that have happened in recent years. One of the things that we've experienced is a heat in retirements. That's something that has happened across multiple industries. And COVID nineteen led to a lot of delayed retirements in the healthcare industry. I think what we saw was a number of people realizing that the COVID nineteen pandemic was over and now was an appropriate time for them to move on in their careers. Simultaneously, we're also seeing, as you well know, the um decreased interest in uh investing in longer educational programs. And so the the rate at which we're producing new physicians and new APCs uh is not expanding at the rate at which our demand is increasing. So these are forces that we can't change. But I think we're seeing locally um both a emphasis on the value of of living in a community like ours, a community that has a sense of community, a sense of um culture and and unique identity. Um, maybe a slower paced life in a rural setting. And also we have at our disposal um a wonderful hospital network that um is head and shoulders above most of our competitors in the rural healthcare marketplace. And so I I think we uh stand a very reasonable chance of continuing our successes in recruiting and actually securing these uh new recruits for the long term.
And I know one of the comments I get from the community members is the frustration. They come in, they see a doctor and then they're told kind of, oh, this doctor's only here for three months or six months or something like that. We can, the the locum doctors and so forth. And my point of view to them is you know, we had positions we had to fill and it's not the ideal choice, but it's better than no doctor at all. Is that accurate what I'm relating that? And that's obviously we're trying as hard as we can to switch from locums with a long-term commitment so they can build a relationship with one doctor and get to know them. So I'm assuming that hopefully is an accurate representation of what we're trying to do.
I would say it's a very accurate representation. Uh, not only have we eliminated almost uh all of the locums coverage that uh that we have. We currently have a number of positions which are being filled by locums who are local. And local uh known entities like Dr. Young and Dr. Smith are wonderful um familiar faces for our community members, even if they're only filling in on a short-term or temporary basis. So I I have um great confidence in the assurance you've given the community and and um we will continue to ensure that these are familiar faces and keep our hopes in the long, long haul.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Um, any other questions?
Yeah, so I I really like the I think I'm the orange team or yellow team or something like that. I I really like that. Um though if there's a, I don't think the public knows what that really means, you know, that there's a.
Team team-based care is is a evolving concept.
Yeah.
It's something that we we can definitely do some work to to do some.
I think you can grab a hold of it knowing that.
So Bob, I can jump in here a little bit. Um, so this has been part of the long, long, longstanding copy for the last twelve months. Um, sorry, I can actually put my video on for you too. Um, we have that, we have material that we've just built out on our website because this has been continually evolving. And at our next meeting, um Dr. Thomas is really taking the initiative with the team saying, okay, this is what it's going to look like. This is how we're moving forward. And now we're really ready to push this out to our community on a much wider base. So with materials there in the clinic to have conversations about what it is. Up until now, it's really kind of been behind the scenes with just some small visuals. And so we're, we're ready to get moving. I've already started sending some of the materials to our team for review and the public will see a lot more than they have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I, a a theme that's not totally on purpose, but it's just been a theme over the last few months is just working together with the dyad leadership, um rowing the same direction. Patient on twenty falls. So takes that operations manager and physicians to really all be connected and and working towards the same thing to do the best for the patients. Um, Dr. Thomas and I have been talking a lot about how can we um have that real community provider feel um and and really connect with the providers, have them them really have a sense of community. Being a community doc, we've been meeting with Dr. Silver, Dr. Larson and others and how to do that because it's different than when a doc would graduate school. They build a building. They'd have their name on it. They own it. They can't really just pick it up and move it. But now a doc is employed just like everybody else. They can give thirty days notice, go to actually give thirty days notice, come to old daycare, give thirty days notice. I mean, they can just hop around just as easily as any other staff now. So really, how do we build that specific community around those docs and have them have some autonomy in these teams as well and some influence and some say. And then that will, I think, help build those teams and the patients to recognize those teams. And it makes it to where they they feel that they are that team, that doc and and caring for the patients. So I think that that's a retention effort that we're working towards.
Yeah. Any additional questions? Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to Chief Financial Officer. And again, uh Jennifer Reed uh joined us. I think it was just Monday you landed.
Yeah, so um you're on. There you go. You're on.
Jason.
All right. So you're the transition to Jason. Last year over the park.
Yep, there you go.
That brewing all covered for at some point. And that's something I've been talking about with everybody is we all are ready to cover for each other. Sometimes things come up like Mandy had to be out today and and wanted her to be out to go go be with family and stuff and and that comes up. So we're we're all there for each other. Um, CFO report, January had really good, good financials, good um patient volumes were consistent, were high. So that resulted in total charges being above budget, one point two million dollars. Um, we're still collecting the SNAP fundings or contractual adjustment is um more favorable than it would be without those SNAP funds, but about three hundred and three thousand dollars per quarter. Um, so that resulted in really a positive patient revenue. We're still over budget with expenses, but that is just attributed to being busier and it costs more in supplies, materials, labor when we're busy. Um, but in the end, we still resulted in a positive operating gain of seven hundred and eleven thousand, which is just over five percent margin, which is a healthy margin in today's healthcare market. Um, and then with investment income coming into nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, that's investment income, mostly some um other income from leased out buildings. And so um accounts receivable, little error there, total A R dollars increased from that forty million, seven hundred thousand to forty-four million. So that large jump is because we had really high charges in the month of January as well. So um feel like they are today, it's like two million coming down as we collect on that.
So the when the big charges come in, there's just no way to get it through any quicker. They have to go to insurance and be processed and and then you can start to tackle.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a good problem in this one because we've had a really good, strong month. And cash has been pretty stable since the bulk of the spending was on the surgery expansion has really slowed. We've been increased spending on the general surgery with pedics remodel for capital. And yeah, cash, total cash did decrease a little bit for the month there. Any questions on the narrative? There was just one small correction on page forty-nine. So on the applications received and processed for financial assistance, I had the the columns were twenty-four and point three. It should have been twenty-three and twenty-four. So point twenty-four's received applicants was two thousand one hundred and twenty-four, so one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven applicants for financial assistance in twenty-three. So uh about a thirty-five percent increase in financial assistance requests. And we were seeing that increase as the state legislature increased the uh terms for qualification for financial assistance.
You you have somebody equates to a dollar amount for that? So we have the number of people.
I don't have it on. It was on December's financials. So you're you're, but there is a January to January.
But it's trending up is what we're saying.
Trended up over the last three years. And some of that trend up is is both we've grown a lot, but it's also expanded access to it.
Do we get any sense how far people are coming? Is it, are we still mostly just dealing with meeting members who would be normal patients? So we're not getting people trying to.
Yeah. Work system. Yep. Yeah, so I wish I had some um uh was advocating to maybe so that it had to be like within your county or within your state kind of the thing. Because it's currently structured where it's anybody in the world can come and apply for financial assistance to get their services here. So that's a, that's a little extreme, but yeah, that's how it's currently and it's anybody in the world. Uh, we've never um applied financial assistance to be just county as well. Some hospitals, we're only applying to county or state, but we've always okay. And it changed for us on that front. Um, Revcycle is doing really well in their restructuring. They hired two new coders. So those are positions, coding positions that previously we were hiring kind of throughout the country. We've got coders that live in Florida on the main. I think one in Montana. Um, just my first is to support local and where we can. So we have two new coders starting just with some terminal attrition last year. So replacing those positions and you got two, three local local, but yeah, come on coders that are going to be working for us.
In in that position, you don't come in with no experience. You have to have some experience to come into that.
These ones have experienced some certified coders. So we do, we do and have taken um people internally as well and grown into these positions and helped them get through certified coding positions and program and become certified coders. Which is actually Haley Aguirre, the coding manager for the department. She actually started in quality office as a um apprentice, maybe under you as a apprentice.
No, no, she was.
Randy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And she was scooped up from the um H I M department at some point. And then H I M helped her get through a coding certification program three years ago. She's a coder and she's our manager. So we do grow our there as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's one of the positions. It's it's nice if you can fill locally, you know, it's a good salary, I think.
Yep. So it's a very good local job. So um Perry Tech also has a medical coding building course. So we just got one out of that as well.
Excellent.
Here's a graduate. Uh, stats on page fifty-one. So primarily stats are positive. Just to note, um clinic visits above budget, one point three percent and fourteen percent higher than we were last year. So still, if you talk to community, it'll say, hey, you don't think it then. We've added, you know, eleven hundred visits compared to January of last year. We've really doubled in the last seven years access there. So I think we are reacting very well. We're growing at a, at a high pace. Um, but the the demand has been there and it's been, it's been good growth. So and that's part of just looking to push in that radio hill building so we can continue to expand that clinical growth. Any questions on stats? Question? Page fifty-three, just to note, has them keeping an eye on it, the Medicare Advantage payer mix. So you know, through up the fall of twenty twenty-four, we were trying to really campaign and educate the community on the differences between Medicare and Medicare Advantage. Um, my goal with that was to at least see Medicare Advantage number be flat because we've had a really in high increased trend in that the last three years. Um, so as of January, not at this point yet, but uh Medicare Advantage number is lower.
And that that's because the Medicare Advantage office is a much more, a lot more friction points to try to actually get paid for.
Yep, just a quick Google search of uh Medicare Advantage or to see national news and to solve the the problems with the program. So when they pay, if they pay and they pay reimbursements are hard, prior authorizations are really hard. So they block treatment. Um, if you get admitted, you need to be discharged to a skilled nursing facility. They'll happily discharge you onto the other side of the state where your payment can't come to see you easily. So they they are just very picky about where they discharge to for skilled nursing facilities and network adequacy. Um, they don't have to have any network adequacy to sell their product in your county island as well. So we do have two Medicare Advantage plans that that sell in our county and market in our county. And they have no network in it. I mean, they can't no network with us or skilled nursing facilities as well. So that's a really negative when that happens. And and we do have a lot of patients, um I know Rhonda knows one, that they fall into those buckets and they fall for those sales and they sign up for a health plan that can't serve them.
And it reflects negatively on us because they think
Yeah.
it's all covered. But they don't realize they signed it with someone who hasn't made an arrangement to sell here.
Yeah.
But they're selling it anyway.
Yes. Uh, at that governance committee meeting that I went to uh before the advocacy at the state, uh, they also talked about the Medicare Advantage. It's financially tearing apart a lot of the hospitals in our state and a lot of other places because they're not paying uh well enough for the services for their patients. And consequently, they're actually starting to tear apart hospitals uh financially. And they cost more to work with. So not only will they not pay, but it costs a lot more. So most said claims to.
First and then that connects back again, but we had a rev cycle where the staff is there doing battle, trying to get legitimate payments paid.
Processes and and the goal there is you can earn a lot of interest on you know, they'll they'll back up a hundred million dollars in claims. They can make a lot of interest on delaying paying that out in six months. So investment returns are a massive piece of their
strategy.
Yeah.
Business model.
And I I know a lot of people that are on Medicare that uh have told me that they get phone calls asking if they're uh would like to get into Medicare Advantage a little bit more to get better coverage. But there, it's not really better coverage, uh you know, based upon what we talked about at the governance committee. Uh, it's uh, but they're trying to get a lot more people to to get them to use them as their insurance. Yeah. They do a lot of cold calling trying to sell their product. Um, you can stay on the phone with them for eight hours and that prevents them from calling a hundred other people once they're headed to the event. But that's something you you guys talk to uh the senators and stuff about.
That's more at the national level. It's Medicare Advantage. State doesn't really control that.
But we did talk last, uh, you know. Think they're busy with other things.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, good. Well, thank you. Because that's what the governance committee was talking about. And and how it's really important to let all the senators and stuff know that's starting to fall apart. And I hope uh but uh you know federally, they uh speed them up a little bit. Yeah, um, that's it on the report.
Uh, any questions for Nathan or Jennifer? Didn't you like to add, add wealth to the town here? Yeah.
We'll hear from me.
Yeah.
Probably about Medicare Advantage.
Yeah.
I've known Jennifer for a couple of years too, so it's really awesome to have her. Uh, hopefully uh decrease your exorbitant workload, get back to a little more normal. I think I know you were balancing a lot to get through this juncture. So.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Yep, I know. I've been, I was like, probably should have had that mean Jennifer. So.
Yeah.
So you have a resolution for us or what?
Yep, uh, resolution on page fifty-nine to the Jennifer Reed as the treasurer.
Anything we should know about that? Is it, it's a position you currently hold and we're just transferring to her as the new CFO?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions about this resolution or motion we accept the resolution?
Yeah, second.
Second by Matt. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye. Nobody's opposed. That motion passed.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, go turn it back down. Anything else for us?
I'm sure she clap for you again.
Just a note, so Jennifer will be the treasurer of District One, already made. Jennifer will be the treasurer of District One, already made the treasurer of District Two. And then uh Jennifer is still the treasurer of K C H N and Greater Health Now, so. We're gonna be working with K C H N and Greater Health Now as well to split those up as well, and if if they want us, it's obviously up to them, but. Actually, Jennifer and I would would be open to working at K C H N and Greater Health Now.
That's something for a future meeting if they propose it or is it?
For them, it's not them for.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
All right, so Michelle, uh what do you have for us, uh chief? Public relations officer.
Hi there, um I do not have anything new to add to my report, but I would be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I'll just say again that I really appreciate the calendar of events that you keep updating every time, that's. It helps a lot of us to plan ahead, so thank you for doing that.
Of course.
And I'm gonna be put another pitch in for the magical evening, I've been told to make sure I make that clear if that's happening and. I'm hoping to see a lot of people at that event, spending a lot of money towards the foundation, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anything else for us?
Uh no, just making sure you did see the date change of April second for the provider appreciation dinner.
Yes.
Perfect, uh no, that's everything.
Thank you, any other questions for me?
Nope.
Okay, that concludes our reports. Uh we're gonna go into education and board reports in a few moments and then uh new business. Uh this is a time for anybody that's given a report and is done, we can take a one minute break. You're welcome to go home, I know it's been a long day, and you're completely welcome to stay if you want to observe the rest of the meeting, it's totally up to you, but let's just pause. For a minute while you decide what you want to do, and then we'll go on to our next obligations.
And where's the police department? The uh director?
Oh, he does the part. He's Chad Lawrence.
Yes.
He's a farm dean.
Yeah, so so I um.
So you call me Dr. Flory.
I will too.
Just since you guys know, one of the things we want to park is. You're welcome. Just wanted you to know that's somewhere to be, that's a really good part of what we do at each meeting, I get more efficient. As your group, I want to make sure that we give everybody's kindness. We're not gonna make you. Anything we thinking about to bring up to the next meeting before we officially vote? Yeah, and any, what we're doing here, you know, potentially once every three months rather than every month. Unless you have something really timely, you can step in, maybe watch, I need to talk to Mark. But these things we're gonna start in discussion. You're missing something on the show in discussion.
And so, you know, like just.
Go home, get your rest, it's been a long day. So as soon as possible, let's.
And you call me Andy.
Call you Andy?
Yeah.
Andy or Andrew or.
All right, I think we're gonna get started again, there we go. We'll take an official break, a few minutes, we're gonna get through this stuff first.
See you next.
They do too.
Oh, oh, okay, so let's reach, oh, perfect, thank you. Oh, good.
Yeah.
And the reports that are that are in the.
So so next up, uh we have education and board reports, and we've asked to have a discussion about an A H A meeting that is happening uh. This summer, so Matt or Bob or whoever wants to speak to it.
Yeah, it's uh, you know, it's good to keep up to date on the sort of federal issues and the issues facing hospitals. And so, you know, uh. Try to vary which of these I go to, so last year I went to the A H A annual meeting in D C. Uh uh it's been a couple of years since I've gone to the A H A Leadership Summit, so I have an interest in going to that. Uh so, you know, the we could go without uh what we need to get board approval for for this, but uh. Yeah, this is the one sort of on state meeting that I'm hoping to go to this year.
Yeah, I was hoping to to go to it too, but uh three of us can't go, right?
It's it's education, so I don't think that's a complete issue, but.
I don't think. We can go, but I think Bob's.
Bob Stefan Doc, it sounds like, so uh and I don't believe Eric, you don't want to go to it?
You don't want to go all the way over to Nashville, because you said you only want to go to San Diego?
Well, he's got, he's got other things going on.
Just decisions have to be made.
Yeah, he's got other things going on.
So uh so Terry, you've expressed interest, I don't believe Erica has has any interest of um anything you'd like to contribute about why you'd like to attend this?
Well, it's because uh I I haven't been to. I don't think I've been to one of those meetings yet, I I've done to some other A H A meeting, but I don't think I've done the leadership one yet.
You do it in Seattle, when it was in Seattle? Or San Diego?
No. Uh but I went to the Washington D C, uh you know, because you and I were there. And then we went to that one down in Florida last February.
That was rural, the first one was.
Yeah, that was, those are the rural meetings I have gone to, because I probably enjoyed that, but I didn't go to that one this year. But I was thinking that that would be interesting, uh because uh. Uh Matt told me I could probably go down to the one in San Diego uh last fall, but I didn't go down there.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that one, but. Um so I know I looked at the agenda for this uh summer's meeting, I think it has some interesting stuff. Uh I've not been there a couple of years and the world's changed a lot, so I'm hoping whoever goes brings back some good information, I'm I'm not pursuing this one myself, so.
Yeah, I'll be happy to to bring back some notes and.
Matt is fantastic at bringing back notes, it's as if I'm there in the presentation myself, like. I really appreciate the effort you put into the the thought that goes into bringing back the information. And again, I think it's good for us to have a a board member uh bring back. What's happening out to with other organizations and just kind of uh keep keep abreast of all that, so.
Uh meeting you and I went to down in Phoenix.
Yeah.
What did we say?
That was that was a while ago, we can we can.
We can cut that out during the break.
Uh so I I make a motion to approve uh. Terry and uh and I going to this uh meeting, the A H A Leadership Summit, which is in July this year.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, second by Bob, any further discussion? So all in favor of Matt uh and Terry being approved to attend the A H uh summer meeting in in Tennessee, uh say aye.
Aye.
Aye then, aye. Any opposed? No one else has left, so that motion passes, so.
Thank you, guys.
Bring back good information, I look forward to hearing.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Anything else under education and board reports? Nothing other old business?
Uh Matt, I do appreciate your notes too, it is really helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no pressure.
It's, I know it's a lot of work, but I it is very, it is meaningful, it's up.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, I try to, I figure it is, it is a.
Professor in you.
Well, yeah, that too, well, a student, actually, uh but uh. But I I know that it's an investment on the part of the of the organization, and I wanna. Get the most bang for the buck for for K V H, so that's one of the reasons why I should do it.
Thank you. Uh so on a new business, A A uh A is board self evaluation, and so. Uh Jason, do you want to start the discussion on that, or what how would you like to move forward with that?
You know, this is my first round of doing a board self evaluation, not that I do it, but um I I was gonna throw out there. I I could suggest doing a special meeting as well, um just something that we could consider doing a special board meeting, just to. Talk to board and self evaluation, I don't know the process that you guys have been through before and look forward to if I'm included in that, knowing how that process was.
I think it's mixed, you see part of it, and then often are just end up with the five of us to have a real heart to heart discussion and so forth. Um I welcome thoughts on how people like to proceed with that this year, we've tried different strategies in the past. What's working for people, what's not working, uh anything new you'd like to look at, so it's open for discussion.
And last year, I know the executive team met and we just had like a half hour roundtable and thoughts and putting some stuff out there, and Amanda last year kind of. Tabulated all that and shared it with the board chairs, so I'd be happy to talk to Janine about doing that.
There's a lot of new voices on it this year also, so, yeah.
I found that I found that really valuable last year.
Yeah.
I I would like to get the senior leadership team feedback.
Yeah, yeah, I I thought the senior leadership team was very good feedback.
Okay.
Last year when we did our self evaluation.
Good, okay, so does anyone want to suggest an overall process of what we want to accomplish during this? Board self report, do we wanna uh do a survey, do we want to meet in person to speak directly to things, do a mix of both? I welcome thoughts on how people would find it most effective and useful for them.
I think, uh I mean, I'm not sure if we also want some sort of written instrument, but I I think. And I think you suggested this a couple of years ago, John, uh a more sort of uh conversational uh process, that sounds fine to me. Uh like I said, I don't know if you also think we should have something to kind of guide discussion, but I do like the the looser format.
Well, I think for me, one option be to have senior leadership provide overall thoughts, and that kind of becomes some of our discussion points to help lead. Our discussion, and I know for me, I like the in-person talking, because I'm. Uh I'm a writer, and if I have to write something out, I will do draft after draft after draft versus if I'm in a conversation, I need done in ten seconds with my thought. And mold it on the spot if I need to adjust something, so that's to me why I avoid. Especially the, you know, rate things from one to five, or I I always have to go in and add my little nuances, and so. I found that the in-person discussion is a great way to quickly communicate thoughts and zone in on the ones that um. Uh maybe are most important to us and and uh, because I think we all, to a person, enjoy. Finding out what can we improve on, what can we do better to serve this organization, so Bob, your thoughts?
Yeah, that, I think that's great, that's what we we did last year, was I was a kind of an essay type. Right, that question, before that was a. One to five choice, you know, and some question. Um doing like a kind of open discussion, taking off what the senior leadership has comments up from the senior leadership. It'd be great.
Yeah, Terry, what are your thoughts?
Uh I uh. The ones that Bob made are very similar than what I think, yes, plus the one that you made.
And so that people feel that if we ask senior leadership to give us a review and, you know, write down their thoughts or consolidate those thoughts. Share them with us, and then we have a a meeting where we get together, go through those together and and is that is that enough of process?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think it's fairly efficient that way, so everyone can speak out and that we can take that information and hopefully grow from it and stuff. So do you want to take the leadership and talk with Janine or organizing?
Yeah, I'll do that. Is there, if if you have any like specific questions or frameworks that you want to make sure that we cover, we can do that, otherwise we'll we'll just.
To me, from my perspective, it's it's. You know, are our interactions useful, are our leadership style useful, how can it be improved, what's working, what's not working, if anything? Again, for me, it's just the 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 more directed is, you know. Fluff slows it down, I mean, you know, just be direct, what is your thoughts, what, you know, and how it allows us to get. More efficiently to things that we can control and fix.
And our work on uh committees, representation on committees.
Uh last year, since you weren't the CEO, uh were you also considered to be part of the senior leadership, Jason? Yes, and so you were able to also go through that, so you know.
Yeah, we all just.
And so the Rhonda and some other people are still here.
Yep, oh, but there's so many new faces.
We just had a conversation and then had Amanda summarize as that conversation pretty much, so.
Yeah, and then from there, we can set a time to get together and um go go through it.
If you, if if there's a comment on there, since I've only known these people for a week, but I can't stand them.
We know who it is. Yeah.
It'll be more than a week by then.
Okay. Well, you'll have like a better basis for your, a better basis for your negative.
Well, I hope you uh don't want to say you can't stand it.
Well, that's okay.
I would never.
But Jason, if you're comfortable taking the lead on that, I'll wait for you to let us know um when you have a summary. From from there, we can set a time to get together and go through everything you learned from that, too.
We'll do it, is there any like date or deadlines or anything that we want to aim for or?
Um I don't know, it's like. I don't think there's a need for it, I think officially as you can, but there's nothing frantic about it.
Yeah, we we should be able to get, we'll we'll meet next week and talk.
Although if we get into December, so we might say we're just gonna make it for twenty twenty six, so.
I think probably by the end of next week, we can have good notes done, and then I'm off the following week, and then.
Okay.
And then we can set up a a special meeting.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right, so then we're on to uh H B board approval, collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local seven six zero. What do you need from us on that?
So just a, there's a resolution, right?
There's just the copies of the collective bargaining agreements in there, we just need a motion from the board to approve it and the signature from.
So I met with the Teamsters Union Representative Carl, plus um many of the Teamsters. Employees had a really good negotiation, I think. So, yeah, um there's neither of us here in that room, we had, I think, four meetings and after that, it went, it went well, good free flow, good conversation. Um just appreciate the opportunity to to go through that process with. I think that we got a good.
And so you need some signatures, you need mine, is there anyone else?
Just yours, just more, just more.
Yeah, normally I don't sign documents until I read them, this, good luck, is what.
Let's say, I'm gonna. This is nothing is significantly different other than rates and dollars, so it's actually just a rates and dollars conversation.
Okay. Very good, all right, so we'll get that done, do you need a motion or just a signature?
Motion.
Motion, all right, so do we have a motion? To approve the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters seven six zero?
I love to approve.
Second, motion by Matt, second by Bob, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I too will vote aye, no one is opposed, that motion passes. And so then I added um an agenda discussion, and so um having been to some uh um conferences over the years. Talking about board leadership, attending some of the online presentations that Wisher does and so forth, and reading uh some books on it. You know, basically what makes a good board, what makes for a good board meeting, and. I think this is the opportunity, we've had a lot of turnover, we've got a lot of new faces, a lot of new ideas, so I think it's good for us. To look at, why do we do what we do, so currently we have an agenda schedule that's very consistent. You know, you go month by month, there's a nice order to it, it works, and my question is. Can it work better if we make any changes, and that's what I wanted us to start a discussion on, I'm not asking for any. Um votes tonight or anything, I just wanted to put out there, I had some thoughts on what I thought. Um might make it better for how I see it and retain information, um and I wanted to, you know, share those with you. And if any of you have shot uh thoughts, I'd love to hear those, and out of this at some point, um. You know, maybe we will make a change, maybe we won't make a change and so forth, so. Now, if I can find where I hid my. She is here up here, so. So um so my goals, when I looked at this as as a, you know, what would I do different? I want to increase overall efficiency of the meetings, I want to facilitate a deeper understanding of K V H departments. I want to decrease reporting obligations for senior leaders where possible. I want to increase the opportunity for managers to highlight strategies, achievements and challenges. And I also want to allow time and encourage forward-looking board discussions during new business. One of the things I I don't think we've done a lot of, we're very reactive, we hear things. And we start to discuss them and we make a decision and move forward, what I'd like to see us do is. Start talking about things before there's a fire to put out. Or long-term thinking, and again, that's it's strategy I like to ease into, but things that, you know, could be topics is, you know, advocacy. Talking about the laws here in Washington State and how they relate to our hospital, talking about what's our strategy for um for new buildings and and. You know, what are things gonna look like a couple of years from now, five years, ten years from now? Um artificial intelligence, is there a place where we're not using it where we should be using it? Um the strategies for all the properties we own, to really make sure we stay on top of that. Um A H A and Wisher conference reports, just like what Matt is talking about, bringing back uh this summer and so forth. Having an actual place where we, you know, look ahead and say, okay, next month, kind of like what we're doing with um with Mandy Olson. And her giving specific reports to each of those categories, we learn a little bit more each month. I want to say, you know, what's a topic we can educate ourselves on during the next meeting? So if the rest of the meeting goes a little bit quicker, because we made it more efficient, we open up a little bit more time. And how can we use that time to be thinking about things before there's a fire and and to hopefully be doing things that um. Help us navigate what I foresee as some more and more financial challenges that are coming our way and stuff, so. I just did a quick draft of this, which summarized. I just did a quick draft of this, which summarizes my ideas a little bit. Um and I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to put it on the screen. I know we have an email form. I don't know if that's even practical for you to get through quickly. If anybody else wants, I have a couple more of these, anybody else wants to see, see what we, give one to Ron, it would be great. Dr. Thomas, would you like to see one? And so. With those goals in mind, I first just looked at our uh agenda, which is very consistent. And again, I have no problem at the end of this discussion, you say, let's just leave it as is, it works for us. So my only thing here is to instigate a discussion and maybe from that discussion, we do decide we want to make some changes. But on the um, the the big changes on the agenda is I'd like to switch some things around. I know one of the things that's hammered on me when I've attended the. Conferences that talk about board leadership. Is you have the most energy in the beginning of a meeting, so make sure you're doing the really important things as quickly as possible. You have the most amount of energy. And so to me, you know, the CEO report, what is the status of the whole organization is really important. And I don't see a reason why it couldn't come a little bit earlier into the CFO report and then into um. Uh COS and CMO, so Chief of Staff and Chief Medical Officer. And then into Chief Nursing Officer, Chief Ancillary, um the Chief of Clinic Operations. And that this group also, uh some of those people, I just don't see that they need to give a monthly report. And so I'm suggesting that some of these people do it every three months, quarterly. Gives them a little reprieve from having to attend this meeting if they don't want to on an evening. Now it goes into your evening. I know that's challenging for for a lot of people. And that when you do come for your your uh meeting every three months, I'd love to you to bring a direct report. To introduce their specific thing, kind of like when you look at the last meeting, we had um revenue cycle here. And it was great to hear directly. I know we had a gamble and heard some of it, but if we hadn't, it would have been, it was wonderful to directly hear from them. Meet meet them, hear their challenges and let them show off their successes. I think it's really important. For people that that don't actually get a lot of face time with us to be able to say, hey, we did this and you know, this is how it was, this is how it is now. So if if we made some of these reports that, it doesn't mean everyone's report is important. It's just a lot of people don't change that much month to month. So it's a lot to ask, put another report together, find something creative to say, it's a lot of effort. And and so I'm just suggesting we think about, do we want to allow some of these people to do quarterly reports rather than monthly reports? And when they do it, do we want to bring in a leadership member from their staff and let them have some direct face time, share some stories and things like that? And uh and then at any point, anyone that's, you know, a leader can say, I I need to be at this month's meeting. I'm not scheduled for two months. I have something I need to say. You know, you just, we just add you to the agenda, no problem at all. So um this is real broad strokes of what I was thinking and again. Um if anybody, it resonates with you, that's great. If you're thinking this is just, we don't want to change the strategy this quick and again, there's. I'm not looking for any votes today, I'm just planting the seed. I shared some of this with Erica today on a phone call because I knew she'd be gone. But other than that, I hadn't shared it with any of you, so um. I will stop talking for a few minutes and I welcome anybody to share their thoughts.
Um I'm glad, sorry, uh I'm really glad you've been thinking about this, uh John, so thanks for doing all that work on it. Um I want to ask uh. Like I find the monthly or. I'm wondering if there's a way to still have the monthly reports so we know what's going on, but uh. If there's a way to shorten it from that, but I do want to get, like, I want to ask you, Rhonda, because. I know you'll tell me what you actually think. One of the, so is writing the report like this every month, is it a pain in the butt or do you appreciate? Being able to convey to the board members like month to month, like all the important work that's going on in your in your unit? Um I guess I'm assuming the latter, like I I really appreciate seeing all the stuff that's going on, all the stuff you're doing, all the stuff that the people under you are doing. Um but if it is just sort of a pain, you think you can cover it, you know, every three months, then then I'm open to that, but I want to get your thoughts on it.
No, it's not a pain at all. Um I do like the idea though of bringing a direct report, maybe even quarterly. Maybe not every month, but quarterly, just to kind of highlight maybe their area and let them do the talking. But I personally might find it harder to do it every three months because then I'm gonna have to be keeping track of what has happened in the last three months because things move fast. Um a lot of times we will submit our board report to Mandy and then we have to change it because every we've. Something happened, you know, and and we want to tell you about that, so um. Things happen fast around here and so I do think month to month would would be easier for me than um every three months.
Appreciate.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the only, I I love the idea of bringing in direct reports. I love the idea, I mean, we do read this stuff in advance, so you know, we don't necessarily have to go through, you know, every piece of it. In person, it can be just like we've reviewed it, do we have any questions, stuff like that. So there might be ways to to sort of trim down the time and again, I appreciate. The notion of efficiency and you're right, looking forward is is a very important thing to do. But to my mind, I think having monthly reports would be good. And if it isn't a huge hassle for for everybody, then I mean, I like that to sort of keep that up um. But so that that's the only thing that that I'm I'm not quite sure about, but I like the idea of bringing a direct reports and and I like a lot of the other ideas here. I just. That's the only thing that strikes me as a little, something I I really appreciate is uh, you know, like knowing. You know, what's going on in Ron's unit month to month. I mean, sometimes I wish more often than month to month, you know, because we just come in.
As a compromise, would it be useful for you to submit a written report like you do? But only be required to attend every third month with a direct report to do kind of the in-face presentation, show off your your team.
Yeah.
It was, because often what I'm seeing is um we'll say, uh Ron, what do you have for us? And you'll say, well, I've submitted my report, do you have any questions? And that's why sometimes I'll ask a question just to give you a chance to, again, show off your team and what you've accomplished.
Yeah.
But it's not, I often already know the information, I want to make sure everybody else knows it.
Right.
So I'm just, again, um I'm totally hearing what you're saying and I appreciate Matt's approach to solving this. Um it was interesting, even in just telling uh Janine uh and and Deb on the way out, a thirty-second summary I'm doing. They seemed thrilled by the idea of all I am to do quarterly reports. So I don't know if we want to check with each senior leader because. Some people's departments move quicker than others.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
And and that's what the thing I'd like to suss out. I I picked, you know, the ones I picked without having necessarily a lot of knowledge of. Like like you pointed out, stuff's moving quick, I want to report it.
But we do get very repetitive, you know, like Jason was reporting on my departments and Janine is reporting on my departments and so. We probably could do a better job coordinating our report instead of each one of us telling you the same thing over and over again.
Because that's the thing, I just, it's just about efficiency, efficiency of of the time of the people that have to sit here. You know, efficiently move the the meeting forward so we can hopefully leave time for some new new ideas and stuff, but um Bob, do you have?
Yes, so how does this? Does senior le- leadership do a huddle once a week or, yeah, for like fifteen minutes or?
I know, we're in a meeting for several hours, yeah.
We have that, okay. So there's plenty of time to kind of know what other people are doing in their section.
Okay.
I mean, I I myself, I like the monthly reports.
Yeah.
Um I I like reading the report, having someone actually report on it or review over it. I don't feel like it's that necessary, but I do like the monthly report. That things do move pretty fast and some things are faster than than others for sure. I think you you get out of rhythm if you go too too long, right, of really knowing what. You know, what the trends are and.
It can actually be harder to do quarterly too because of the rhythm and the pace, so. Yeah, I just always know every fourth Thursday that rhythm and, you know, I have a process where I keep notes to the month and then at the end of the month, I write my report.
Well, you're gonna get one every month regarding, so.
Yeah, and I know Julie was um before the board meeting, she, on that Tuesday before, she would always review. Um what we, what the board meeting, what we're going to do, but if we bumped that out before our report was due, we would kind of know what each other was reporting on in advance. Instead of maybe it's all saying the same thing, so.
Yeah, which is a a bad thing too, because I see themes, it's like we had a clear theme tonight and it was really nice to see that whole theme come together. And I think that's how it should be and it shows that we are working as a unit. Um and as far as attendance goes and stuff, it's. It's um preferred for them to attend, but it's, things come up like Mandy was gone, I was talking to Dr. Thomas just today of, hey. What's it, what do you expect attendance to be for the board? Like, do I have to plan all my vacations around board meetings? Answer is no. Um he'll have somebody come sit in from time to time and and I welcome that and want that. Um because it gives us opportunity to meet somebody new, it gives them an opportunity to be in front of board and it. It makes sure Dr. Thomas is out with his family too, so. Um I think you'll see some some evolve naturally as well, so like um the CNO report and Dr. Thomas's dyad. Report, those are things that we'll be dropping in as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, uh uh one while back, a few years ago, uh quality was, I don't know, somewhere in the middle. Of the agenda and we bumped it up to the beginning because we hear, you know, over and over again at these meetings and things, you know, this is sort of. This has to be your your main focus, like finances, yes, that helps you do all that stuff, but the main focus has to be a quality service. Community and stuff like that. So I guess, I mean, I don't want to make Mandy do work that she doesn't have to do, but I do like the idea of having her. Every month, if for no other reason than just to to uh indicate. But this is our primary obligation, you know, so um I mean, the, no offense to to the CEO, but uh that. His report, at least as as in as far as what our obligation is, is less important than the quality report. But anyway, that's just my opinion of that, so I certainly wouldn't want to keep that.
Yeah, I was going to discuss the quality too because in all the uh educational meetings I've been in. Uh quality is one of the most important things as a commissioner is oversee. Uh because quality is very important and having Mandy uh send out. All all the dashboards and stuff for people to review and see how the quality is going on is very important. And uh uh what Matt was saying is it did used to be at the bottom, I knew that. And it was moved up to the pot, this quality was something very important. But uh I don't see where quality was beyond this uh new agenda here at all.
I think CQ, oh right, Chief Quality Officer.
Mm-hmm. C CQ, so you would only have her do it monthly, uh quarterly?
Putting this together and.
Yeah, it starts to think about for sure. Yeah, I mean, I, my favorite, all the work you did on this, John, I think, and I certainly, I hope it's. I mean, we're trying to tinker with it, but I think that it's a good starting point and I appreciate.
I just, I wanted to create the discussion, I'd like to hear from other people like Dr. Thomas, how do you think the meetings run? What can we do to make it more efficient sort of thing?
It's a great question. Um a- as a new uh attendee of the meetings, I feel like the the meetings are more efficient than I remember hearing. When I was listening as a remote attendee, so I I I think you've had success already. Um in terms of uh my personal contribution to the meeting, oftentimes I struggle to find enough content to be meaningful to you in my report. A lot of the work that I'm doing is behind the scenes and not necessarily for public consumption. Uh but I think that one of the things that's very meaningful to me and I think meaningful to my team members is being able to highlight the work that they're doing, so. Think of a feature somebody, whether they attend as a guest or are just featured in the report, I think is a really meaningful contribution. And I would imagine that a lot of the other senior leaders have that same relationship with their team.
Mm-hmm.
Um so drawing attention to the good work that's being done but not represented here in this room is probably the most important thing we can do.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't ask the guy who runs NBC how to be more efficient.
It's the, it's the Q, uh CQ, well, the quality one.
Mm-hmm.
So you only have it here on a quarterly, but I think it's important that we have that information. That's why in big red letters, the first one I put was draft.
Put it out here so we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I was just saying that the the quality is important. Um uh because uh it's very important for.
You can't rip yourself, then we gotta keep moving. So Matt said it, you said the same thing, you say something different you already said? Quality's important, I do not disagree with that. Are you gonna say anything different?
Thank you, wonderful John.
Okay, uh Michelle, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have any thoughts on what we've been discussing here, if you've been listening?
No, I I've a hundred percent been listening. Um I actually, as much as I I hate to say it, I welcome the time to do the board report. Because it makes me take a pause, it makes me look back. Um it's also when I, that's in my schedule when I am looking at all of the metrics. And seeing how things are going. Um i- in all honesty, I think the person that probably has the biggest lift in all of this is Mandy Weed. Who's reviewing all of the information for us and compiling it. Um but I I really do prefer the monthly cadence versus the quarterly.
Thank you, it's very helpful. So um. We don't have to drag this out any further again. I just wanted, I've been thinking about it and it's really nice, this direct feedback on what's working for. The people that have to show up at these meetings, so um I probably won't say much more about this unless somebody else at some point picks up the torch and says, you know. There's some tweaking we can do. Um I did my pass, I put it out there publicly. Um I know that led you guys to have thoughts, so I'd encourage you at a future meeting, if you have thoughts you want to incorporate. Somehow let me know, you know, let's add it to the agenda and we can talk some more, but I don't think I will push anymore until somebody. You know, again, says there there's a part of this they want to pursue or they have something new they want to pursue.
Well, I I think uh it sounds to me like the idea of inviting a direct report. Uh I mean, I I think that that might be a nice thing to move forward on. I think that's a really good idea that you had. And so if that sounds good to the people here, I mean, we went to that thing at uh Revenue Cycle, for example, and really heard a lot of nice things. That would be something that one one time, you know, the CFO could bring such, um so I really like what you did here. Um I think that uh it it wouldn't be a bad thing to just move forward on on the this one. You know, we can move forward on other things later, but but actually out of all this work that you did, um try to incorporate that in the future meetings.
I just wanted, the one of the strategies was to reduce the core meetings so that a direct report would not feel rut. You know, they can have their fifteen minutes or whatever they need to go through their topic, like when we had a revenue cycle, suddenly two hours went by. It's amazing. Once you get people in the room, they're talking about, we're getting questions. And it's like, I I know we've worked hard to bring these down for meetings that were ending at nine o'clock to try to end at reasonable time. So my only fear is if suddenly there's a direct report with everybody, we have to really work to stagger them. Make sure they have their moment to shine without feeling, I don't want somebody to come here and then they feel rushed, like, oh, I I just gotta talk for sixty seconds, please.
At Ferry, we did a department spotlight, just one department every month and that seemed to work out pretty well. Because sometimes it got difficult to, who do we see now? But we have board departments here, so that probably wouldn't that happen, but. But that worked out really well and they just had their month to prepare. Usually they had the a week to prepare, but. So just, just playing.
Excellent, yeah.
Uh so this is like our commissioner copy, because doing a copy and everything is very important. So thank you, John, for putting together a copy on on this agenda. Uh so that way we are analyzing it to make it a a quality meeting, so thank you, John.
Yep, thank you, yeah. Bob, any other thoughts you have today?
I really like the idea of kind of featuring a department or having the one or two additional members from a certain department come and. Kind of feel and just to kind of get to know the departments a little bit better.
I think it just takes the coordination so that eight departments don't show up on the same day, so.
Exactly.
They know.
We can coordinate that.
Add it to the board calendar too and just have departments sign up for it and just add it as a line on there and then.
I know.
Prepare ahead of time.
Mine, like I tried to spotlight, like Julie Kirkland's have been spotlighting the last couple of months, her her department, she. She feeds a lot of the other departments, so she hires, recruits, trains talent and then they they go on to other departments. So I try to really highlight and encourage that, she she knows it and you know, it's it's hard being that revolving door. She welcomes it, so I try to spotlight it in the report, she really appreciates that. Um similarly, like the financial assistance one, throwing those numbers in, that was handy, that was one to highlight that and she loved that, she texted me. Um you know, but I think um opportunity for them to come in and speak, I, we can ask them and I do. Those things on and stuff on occasion, but to actually speak is a a good opportunity. Um do you feel your department, you'd be able to rally a couple from each department?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you know, we've got our Beckman Coulter all lined up now, so I'd love to have Katie come in and share.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
Alana too, they put, both put so much work into that, it would be nice for them to shine.
Yep, and I know RevCycle really liked doing that, exactly last month.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, that was, no bills. You know, yeah.
Productive time, though.
You know.
It was so educational, just, just.
The opportunity to even vent and.
And and again, to me, that worked because we were in their space, that kind of. We could talk as long as we wanted, I didn't feel like we were grinding other things to a halt. That's my one concern about. I agree. Doing here, I feel like I have to limit my curiosity, just to, we have to somewhat move the meeting ahead. So I'm not sure if it's a hybrid, they come and they can speak to something they're they're excited about and maybe from that schedule and gamble later that month to come to their space. Meet the rest of their team, ask questions, I don't, and and again, maybe I'm overcomplicating it, but.
We've been quite efficient, you know, the last four months, knock on wood, their meetings have been. We've been quite efficient. You know, the last four months, knock on wood, their, our meetings have been like an hour and a half almost. I'm, I'm almost thinking that that highlight we throw at the front of the agenda so they can be welcomed to leave. Cause sometimes that's the, the barrier. So like when Lisa and Healy then came, they did a presentation and, and head out.
Yeah, that's nice for them.
So I think that if we could at, at least do that, at the front of the agenda and then the reports. But the meeting times, it felt really good.
It makes you feel better. I'm still on Jason. Our meetings were ten thirty to about three o'clock in the afternoon.
Hmm. Terrific. It's a lot of sitting. But, well, I appreciate everybody, you know, taking time to think this over. Um, maybe at the next meeting, we can do another round of discussions. It fastens a little bit. And I wanted to give Eric a chance to think about it, you know, contribute her thoughts. But I'm hearing, I think, some positive, um, nuances coming out of this, so we might be able to incorporate in the very near future. Because again, to me, the big thing is making sure the people out there doing the work have a chance to show it off, to come in, be proud. They should be proud of it. I want to learn about it and learn about them a little bit. So. And if the meetings are efficient enough, we don't have to tighten them too much more, then that's all good.
It's felt real good for me. I know the senior leader team has really appreciated that kind of pause at the end. They were going to go to new business.
Yeah.
Say that out. As you can see, those that love, they do really appreciate that. So.
Yeah. And I, and I know it's long days for them. So.
I could adjust that last year.
So, uh, anything else on this bullet point before we move on? Thank you, everyone, for your contributions of that. All right. So we're going to move to executive session. We're going to do re- recent, uh, real estate personnel analytic case, R C W forty two dash three zero dot one ten. So we'll take a, a three minute break. We'll, we'll reconvene at seven fifteen for executive session. Uh, how long do we think we need for tonight?
Let's say thirty minutes.
So we'll stay, we'll say thirty minutes, seven fifteen. Uh, we'll start executive session for thirty minutes. Is there going to be anything each be voted on in?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there will be a vote after executive session. We'll reconvene in the public session. And at that point, if there's a vote to be had, we will do it then. You think that seventy forty five? Let's make standard, but when we come out at executives, apparently it's thirty minute exam. So thank you, Eric. And who do you need to stay for executive?
I have Rhonda stay and Jennifer stay as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michelle, if you, I think you left. All right. Reconvene in two minutes.